Roll call.
Milton, here. Paul, here. Palermo, here. Festerson, here. Gray, here. Harding, here.
Mr. President.
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for opening remarks.
Pledge of Allegiance. Give the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we have the mayor with us here today to give her opening remarks and realizing that for the budget proposal for 2021, the only thing standing between you and your remarks for your proposal is me giving my remarks. So I'm gonna sit down and let, welcome you and, and look forward to hearing what your proposal is for 2021.
Thank you.
Item six is Mayor Gene Stothard's presentation of the recommended 2021 budget.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. Council President Jaram, council members, guests, and citizens of Omaha. I am very pleased to be with you here today. Managing expenses this year and developing a sound and responsible budget for next year has been very challenging. Our goal is to continue to provide high-quality, transparent services that enhance our city and minimize impacts to our citizens and employees.
Excuse me, ma'am. You're out of order.
Defund the police. Defund the police. Defund the police. Defund the police. Twenty percent goes to human rights and relations. Defund the police. Defund the police. Defund the police. Defund the police. Give the money to teachers. Defund the police.
You're out of order.
Defund the police. 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 Shame on you. Defund the police. Give the money to the teachers.
Please.
Well, that started out well. I think I might just repeat myself here. Managing expenses this year and developing a sound and responsible budget for next year has been very challenging. Our goal is to continue to provide high-quality service, transparent services that enhance our city.
Your sign's upside down.
Yeah.
Defund the police. Defund the police. Defund the police.
I know.
Defund the police. Defund the police. Defund the police.
Anyone else?
All right, please proceed.
All right. I'll repeat. Managing expenses this year and developing a sound and responsible budget for next year has been very challenging. Our goal is to continue to provide high-quality, transparent services that enhance our city and minimize impacts on our citizens and our employees. Thank you to the council members for all of your input and your ideas while developing this budget. Our budget priorities always reflect the goals, investments, and services that sustain and uplift a great and proud city. In May, Omaha voters approved one of the most significant financial...
Defund the police.
Okay.
Why are we spending more on the police funding than our libraries, than our teachers, than helping? Why are we spending all this money on police funding? Using that funding to then tear down innocent citizens who are protesting, who are using their rights to protest. Defund the police.
Well, we got to page two. So here we go. In May...
What 159 million is way too much money to be spending on the police. Defund the police. You are a coward, Gene. You smirk when you're a fucking coward. Know it.
Yeah. Are we ready? City Council?
Yes.
Okay. In May, the Omaha voters approved one of the most significant financial and community improvement initiatives in years. A $200 million bond issue to create a long-term sustainable pavement maintenance program and a levy increase to fund it. Both passed overwhelmingly. The tax rate change will pay off the bonds. Our streets have been underfunded for decades and this solution is long overdue. Immediately after voter approval, we started taking bids on work on many new projects and some are underway now.
You don't fund the people. You fund the police. Fund the people. Defund the police.
Immediately after voter approval, we started taking bids for work on many of the new projects and some are underway now. This year, in 2020, we have already awarded 30 additional street resurfacing projects worth $21.5 million. In 2021, we plan to double that amount, adding 40 million to street projects. This is in addition to the resurfacing, repair, and construction spending already in our city budget and capital improvement program. Although the additional street projects have already started, I am pleased to tell you that the tax rate will not change until 2022. We will use available cash management and existing bond capacity to pay the full cost of the new street projects this year and next, and then will replenish the funds in 2022. A portion of the new funding, $6 million each year, can be directed to unimproved street projects throughout the city. These are streets that were not initially built to current city standards by developers. For decades, improvements could only be made if the property owners paid for it. We changed that policy a year and a half ago with input from a citizen task force. We now share the cost with the homeowners who petitioned to create street maintenance districts or road improvement districts. However, the policy allows for an exception in high-poverty areas where the city will pay 100% of the costs to reconstruct the unimproved streets. I have directed our Public Works Department to skip the petition process in these neighborhoods and begin working on the unimproved streets in high-poverty areas that have already been designated. We will simply schedule and do the work on these streets that have been neglected for so long. This is a vital, long-term improvement to neighborhood streets. For most of 2020, we have focused on the coronavirus pandemic. Douglas County and the state of Nebraska have been tremendous partners, and I personally want to thank Dr. Adipour and Governor Pete Ricketts for their teamwork. COVID-19 requires our ongoing vigilance to keep, keep each other safe and keep each other healthy. Please let us all continue to do our part for a healthier community. COVID has also affected our 2020 city budget like no other economic setbacks have done in history. We have incurred and we will continue to incur significant expenses that no one could have anticipated and no, we could not budget for. There has been significant impact on our revenue, which funds every city department.
The Omaha Police Department has reached up nearly 40% of the general fund budget. We need to defund the police and we need to reroute that to other places. We need to defund the police and put it towards education, the arts. We need to put it towards our parks. We need to put it back into the community, not towards the police.
With COVID, there's been a significant impact on our revenue, which funds every city department and services that we offer for the community and for employee salary. Our general fund revenue shortfalls through the end of this year will likely exceed $56 million. This is primarily due to reduced sales tax and occupation tax revenue, and I am committed to finding solutions. Months ago, we initiated immediate cost-saving measures. These included a hiring freeze and a freeze on optional discretionary spending. We reduced 2020 department budgets by $5 million. We have tried to reduce police and fire overtime. We eliminated 800 part-time positions through furloughs and canceled summer jobs in city departments. We closed libraries and community centers and canceled summer camps and neighborhood grants. These actions will result in savings of nearly $20 million. But we also have more than $75 million in COVID-related expenses. So you see, we have reached a critical point right now. We need a formal commitment now from the state of Nebraska and Douglas County to distribute the CARES Act funds both entities have already received from the federal government. Together, they have received $1.25 billion. The intent of the CARES Act is for the state and the county to reimburse local governments for COVID-related expenses, yet neither has formalized a commitment to do that.
Defund the police.
Hold on, ma'am.
Defund the police. Defund the police.
We need immediate action or severe cuts to our 2020 budget will be imminent. This includes cuts to services and programs that people rely on and layoffs across all city departments, including public safety. This could happen. So I am asking again for a responsible and immediate distribution of the CARES Act funding from the state and from Douglas County. While we continue to manage our 2020 budget, we have simultaneously developed our recommended 2021 budget, which I'm presenting to the city council today. The 2021 budget is based on our expectations that Omaha's economy will continue to recover from the devastating effects of the pandemic. Let me share some of the highlights, changes, new expenditures, all designed to improve services and provide good service to the Omaha taxpayers. The total general fund spending for 2021 will be just over $439 million, which is a 4.6% increase over 2020. The largest expense that is driving this increase is the cost of our new solid waste collection contract and processing of recyclable materials. Without that expense in the general fund budget, the departmental budget increase for 2021 would be approximately just 2%. The 2021 budget for all funds will be about $1.2 billion. The proposed property tax levy for 2021 will remain unchanged. There will be no levy increase in 2021. Given the financial challenges that we face this year and next, I am pleased that for the last eight years, my recommended budgets have either lowered or maintained the property tax levy. I have never increased the city's tax levy. We anticipate net sales tax revenue to be up 4.4% in 2021. We estimate property values that are set by the Douglas County Assessor will increase about 6%, resulting in increased revenue to the city. We will also carry over $7 million from the 2019 budget surplus. During the time that I have been mayor, our carryovers, our surpluses, have now totaled over $74 million. Careful budgeting and spending management helps us control those expenses and tax rates over time. We are proud of our strong financial performance. And now for department-specific proposals. We will continue to appropriately fund the Omaha Police Department.
There's, there's no applause allowed in the chambers. The sheriffs will remove those who are applauding as well. I would remind, you're out of order, sir. I ju, sir, you're out of order.
You're a liar. You're a liar. You're a coward. How could you support a white supremacist rally? How can you do that?
I'm just answering a simple question. That's why I'm running against you. Because the people are screaming out there and you're laughing. It's hurting. This is a shame, man.
I would remind all of those in attendance to maintain order. The rules exclude applause as well.
How could you support a white supremacist rally and talk about improvements for our community? You're a fucking liar. Fuck you, Gene Stothard.
Okay. Shall I continue? We will continue to appropriately fund the Omaha Police Department to provide community policing, emergency response services, and training. Defunding the Omaha Police Department would be irresponsible and reckless, and I will not do it. My goal is to make a good police department even better. I recommend funding the Omaha Police Department at $162 million, an increase of just over 1% from this year. I have met our longstanding goal of 902 police officers, sworn officers. Therefore, this is the first year that I will not recommend an increase in sworn officers. I appreciate the public support and the council's support as we've worked hard over the years to increase the number of officers.
Don't touch me. Don't touch me.
All you shitty, sniveling white people need to recognize and pay attention to what's going on.
Defund the police. Put it into education and earth. Defend it. Fuck Gene Stothard.
All you sniveling shitty white people can go away.
All right. I do appreciate the public support and the council's support as we have worked hard over the last several years to increase the number of sworn officers by nearly 100 officers. I also appreciate the service and the difficult job officers face every single day. Now more than ever, we need a well-funded, well-paid, well-trained professional police department. A safe community cannot exist without law enforcement. The Omaha Police Department is different from other police departments around the country. For example, for nearly 20 years, the Omaha Police Department has earned national accreditation from the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies, or CALEA. Accreditation...
We are gonna vote you out of office. Mark my words. Five.
Accreditation must be earned every three years, and that process started again for us just a few months ago. The department must comply with approximately 380 standards in order to maintain accreditation. The rigorous evaluations and onsite assessments, judge training, and department policies for compliance. Only 10% of police departments in the entire country have this accreditation. We should all be proud of this recognition. OPD follows best practices that have been established throughout the entire country. In 2021, OPD will expand its mental health co-responder program, which embeds a licensed mental health professional in each of our five police precincts. When a member of our community is in crisis or suffer from mental illness, the program connects them with resources. The goal is to divert people from jail or emergency protective custody when their needs can be better and more appropriately served and met in the community. The mental health co-responders and coordinators also provide training to help everyone understand mental illness and the impact of trauma. In 2021, we will make another significant investment and provide additional body worn cameras and non-lethal tools for frontline officers. The K-9 unit and the mounted patrol will be assigned cameras, bringing our total to nearly 600 cameras in use. We are one of the few police departments in the entire country that has full deployment of body cameras. We will have a new TASER system that will include a de-escalation warning that helps prevent officers from ever having to deploy their TASER in the first place. Officers will complete additional certification training. Chief Schmader and his command staff and all of our officers have earned greater public trust over time, and they have earned mine. We do hear from some citizens, and we heard it today, that we should allocate taxpayer dollars to community programs. We do, and we will continue. We distribute approximately $20 million annually to programs that provide job training, youth services, housing, community development, emergency services, and mental health. We fund the Step Up Program, our Way to Work Employment Program, truancy preventions, domestic violence prevention, and PACE Athletics, police athletics for community engagement that serves over 5,000 youths in our community. We direct millions of dollars to support safe and affordable housing and services for people that are experiencing homelessness. We provide financial, educational, and training assistance that at-risk population in our community so desperately need, and I know these programs make a positive impact. Especially in these difficult budget years, it is important that we continue to fund our community service programs, and I am pleased that we are able to continue this high level of support. This is not an issue that we need to defund the police department to, to fund community service programs. It is not either or. It is both, and we do that. In the Omaha Fire Department, we will purchase a second set of turnout gear to enhance firefighter safety. The capital improvement program includes replacement of Fire Station 31 in South Omaha. The station is being designed right now, and we plan to break ground later this year, and the station will be open in late 2021 or early '22. And we will replace three fire engines next year, continuing our annual equipment replacement program. The department will implement technology improvements for cloud-based record storage that will lead to an annual cost saving of over $100,000. Staffing level in 2021 for the Omaha Fire Department will remain unchanged from this year. The Public Works Department will experience several important changes next year, all with important impacts on our budget and our customer service. In a few months, the city's 20-year contract with Waste Management will expire, and we will transition, transition into a new agreement with FCC Environmental for solid waste, yard waste, and recycling pickup. We will significantly improve collections with state-of-the-art technology to improve consistent, modernized service. However, the cost of the solid waste contract will increase by 44%. We knew this increase would be significant with the new contract, and we are prepared to manage it without a tax increase. Our contract with First Star Fiber for recycling processing also expires at the end of this year. Bids for the new contract are out, and they are due back in August, and a new contract will be awarded. The cost of both solid waste collection and recycling processing will increase our general fund budget by over $10 million in 2021. We will add about 20 employees in the Public Works Department, including new positions in street repair and maintenance, our wastewater treatment plants, and our sewer maintenance to expand inspection and maintenance of Omaha's 2,000 miles of sewer network. Next year will be a very important year for a Public Works Department, and I know they are up to the challenge. In the Planning Department, we will hire two additional inspectors to manage our new landlord registration and inspection program. The library budget will increase by 2%, and more work will be devoted to the digital resources that have become so popular and so necessary for many. This includes more digital book titles, virtual programming, editing software, and licenses and equipment for remote communications. The Human Rights and Relations Department will remain committed to their important work in employment opportunities, investigations, and outreach. And I am particularly pleased to report very positive results for our small and emerging business program. At the six-month point this year, the SEB contractors have been awarded contracts totaling $12 million, and that's 15% of all of our contracts that are awarded. This time last year in comparison, the awards equaled $8 million. To all of you, it is an honor to serve. It is an, also, an enormous responsibility that all of us have to spend city resources in the way that citizens expect: accurately, transparently, and with positive results. The proposed capital improvement program and the 2021 recommended budget have now been posted online on the Omaha website. A public hearing on this budget will be held in this chamber on August 11th at 6:30 PM, and I encourage feedback from citizens, and I encourage you all to attend. We will work hard to continue to uphold the high standards in all that we do. Thank you all.
Thank you. The budget public hearing will be August 11, 6:30 PM. Thank you, Mayor. Madam Clerk, would you...
Oh, I gotta hand you the books.
While the mayor comes around.
Just real quick, an affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
We ask everyone to please silence all electronic devices.
Item seven, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for 168 Snowden Commons, located northwest of 168th Street and Rachel Snowden Parkway. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item seven begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Oh. Welcome.
Good afternoon. Lana Bayless, DLR Group, here on behalf of Bennington Public Schools as a proponent, just here in case the council has any questions or if there's any comments later.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents or opponents on item seven? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Milton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item seven is approved, seven to zero. Item eight, a resolution to approve the revised preliminary plat for Kensington Park, located northwest of 204th and Q Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item eight begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Kyle Hossi with E&amp;A Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road, representing the applicant. We have a 96, 92.8 acre property on the northwest corner of 204th and Q Street. I don't know if we had the, any visual stuff.
Yeah, you just raise the arm and...
Okay.
And then you zoom in around on top. There you go.
It's shown highlighted here in the blue. We'll have a mix of rezoning this piece of property right now to DR and MU. As you can see here, we have about 24 acres of DR in the north portion of it, and then a mixed-use component of about 56.8 acres to the south. This is a idea of what the overall property will look, look like at full design. And with that, I'll make myself available. Any questions you might have?
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Milton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item eight is approved, seven to zero. Items nine to 11 can be considered together for estates at Loveland, located at 87th and Pacific Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item nine, an ordinance to rezone this property from R2 District to R4 District. Item 10, a resolution to approve the final plat for the estates at Loveland. Item 11, a resolution to approve the estates at Loveland subdivision agreement.
The public hearing on items nine through 11 begin at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Mr. President. Members of the council, Larry Jobin, 11440 Weston Road, appearing now on behalf of the developer and the development. This is at 85th and Pacific Street. It's gonna be a very nice subdivision. The lots along Pacific Street here are going to be a villa concept. This is at 85th and Pacific Street. It's going to be a very nice subdivision. The lots along Pacific Street here are going to be a villa concept, and the lots on the south side of the development are expected to be or will be single-family detached residential houses. They're expecting the villa lots to be about $800,000 plus in cost, and the single-family lots will be about $850,000 plus in costs. So it will be a very nice development. It also solves a number of problems. There used to be about seven driveways along Pacific Street that will now be gone. It adjusted the sidewalk away from Pacific Street, so it has a much safer pedestrian presence along Pacific Street. So anyway, it's a great development, and I look forward to your approval. And to have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 8 is approved, 7 to 0. Items 9 to 11 can be considered together for estates at Loveland located at 87th and Pacific Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 9, an ordinance to rezone this property from R2 District to R4 District. Item 10, a resolution to approve the final plat for the estates at Loveland. Item 11, a resolution to approve the estates at Loveland subdivision agreement.
The public hearing on items 9 through 11 begin at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Mr. President. Members of the Council, Larry Jobin, 11440 Western Road, appearing now on behalf of the developer and the development. This is at 85th and Pacific Street. It's going to be a very nice subdivision. The lots along Pacific Street here are going to be a villa concept, and the lots on the south side of the development are expected to be or will be single-family detached residential houses. They're expecting the villa lots to be about $800,000 plus in cost, and the single-family lots will be about $850,000 plus in cost. So it will be a very nice development. It also solves a number of problems. There used to be about seven driveways along Pacific Street that will now be gone. It adjusted the sidewalk away from Pacific Street, so it has a much safer pedestrian presence along Pacific Street. So anyway, it's a great development, and I look forward to your approval. And to have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, 7 to 0. Items 13 and 14 can be considered together. Applications to consider Class I K and Class O liquor licenses for the River City Star located at 151 Freedom Park Road.
The public hearing on items 13 and 14 begin at this time. Are there any proponents?
Dan Cavand, 17547 Patrick Ave. Also here to answer any questions you guys have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, 7 to 0. Item 15, an application to consider a Class D liquor license for Green Onion Lounge located at 11414 Davenport Street.
The public hearing on item 15 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes. Ryan Ricky with Fraser Stryker on behalf of the applicant. KCGO doing business as the Green Onion here with the owner and manager, Crystal Kniglia. We're here to answer any questions that you guys may have.
Thank you. Did you wish to say anything?
No, I'm just excited to continue Jesse's legacy.
Great. Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, 7 to 0. Item 15, an application to consider a Class D liquor license for Blondie's Pub located at 5010 Grover Street. A's communication from the Planning Department regarding permits.
The public hearing on item 16 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Matthew Monroe from McGrath North on behalf of the applicant. KBDO LLC is attempting to operate a business bar, pub, and pizzeria named Blondie's Pub and Pizza. Putting on the screen the signage that was recently developed.
There you go.
Thank you. And to address some of the comments that have been added on the agenda, I think some of the comments are directed to more of the type of establishments which are applying for a tavern license. This is intended to be a pub and pizzeria. The intention is to replace the former godfather's location there, which served pizza and alcohol as well. And I believe, we believe that this establishment will be a benefit to the neighborhood and provide a restaurant and a place for family-friendly and people to attend and enjoy. Additionally, I'd like to address the communication from the Planning Department. Obviously, the applicant will stipulate to all required permits for the installation of the outdoor patio, which will be on the north side. It's currently not constructed at this point, but the applicant intends to obtain all permits and develop that area according to municipal code, so...
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Welcome.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, 7 to 0. Item 17, an application to consider a Class I liquor license for Johnny T's Bar and Blues located at 3825 North 30th Street with a waiver of City Council Liquor Rule 7. A's communications in opposition.
The public hearing on item 17 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Welcome, Senator.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. Scott Laughtonbaum on behalf of the applicant. This is Mark Macklin. He will be the manager of the restaurant, I'm sorry, of the bar. It is affiliated, or John Miller is one of the individuals involved in this. He has a sister operation down in Mississippi that he's run for quite some time very successfully. I can't say I've been there, but he sent me some rub for ribs that I've used, and it was very good. I can vouch for that. We just hope you look favorably on this application, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents wishing to be heard? Proponent in favor?
Honorable counsel. My first name is Shilda, the last name is Banks Garnett. I live at 2819 Spalding, two blocks from the bar that is applying for the license. I have absolutely no problem. The family is well-known, synonymous with, they cause no problems, no trouble. Their name is not constantly coming up where they have to call for 911, whether it be fire, police, or emergency. They manage and handle all of their business in a very professional and in an upright way. I have absolutely no problems with this bar opening, and I am exactly two blocks from it.
Thank you.
Thank you kindly.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Gray, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to take the opportunity, first of all, I've been watching the work that you've been doing. I haven't seen anything on the inside because I haven't been in there yet, but you've been doing some pretty good work on the outside. Can you tell a little bit about what you're going, what that, what the bar is going to be like, or, you know, what kind of music? What, are you going to serve food? What, just give me a little background on what you plan to do.
Right now, we're going to follow the same model as our sister store in Jackson, Mississippi. And that is, our motto is classic cocktails with a mix with America's music. It's going to be more of a conversation spot. In the near future, we hope to incorporate food as well, because we have a vast menu at our sister store, and we're not, we're more of a corporate-type operation. It's not necessarily a neighborhood spot, and we cater to primarily professionals that enjoy fine cocktails.
Thank you. I appreciate it, and thank you for the effort of moving in and doing some of the work, because it did catch fire, and I know you had to do some work to catch up. So wish you a lot of luck. Thank you for developing a business in this area on 30th Street. We, I appreciate it, and I wish you a lot of luck, and with that, I make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Roll call.
Okay, and just a reminder, since there's that waiver of Liquor Rule 7, it will require the two-thirds vote. Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, 7 to 0. Item 18, an application to consider a Class D liquor license for NP Mart 7 located at 3009 Parker Street.
The public hearing on item 18 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Mr. President, members of the council, Mike Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue. This is an existing business, convenience store that's being purchased by an owner, and they're, he's here along with the manager. If you want to talk to him, we're here for any questions. No, no changes in the business plan are planned.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
My name is Shelby Pickens. I live at 2586 Laurel Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska. I will be doing the security for that particular property, and just if you guys have any courses or need to address anything, we can answer it.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
My name is David A. Perry Senior. I am also doing security at, with the NP Mart. I work side-by-side with Shelby, also with Ashad. If you have any question concerning security, I'll be ready to ask, answer your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, 7 to 0. Item 18, an application to consider a Class D liquor license for NP Mart 7 located at 3009 Parker Street.
The public hearing on item 18 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Mr. President, members of the council, Mike Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue. This is an existing business, convenience store that's being purchased by an owner, and they're, he's here along with the manager. If you want to talk to him, we're here for any questions. No, no changes in the business plan are planned.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
My name is Shelby Pickens. I live at 2586 Laurel Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska. I will be doing the security for that particular property, and just if you guys have any questions or need to address anything, we can answer it.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
My name is David A. Perry Senior. I am also doing security at, with the NP Mart. I work side-by-side with Shelby, also with Ashad. If you have any question concerning security, I'll be ready to ask, answer your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 18 is approved, 7 to 0. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cast any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda and the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearings on agenda items 19 through 23 were held July 14, 2020. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, 7 to 0.
The public hearings on agenda items 24 through 44 today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or opponent.
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, 68132. On items 33, 35, and 37, I basically am going to pose all three. Once again, here's some items that sounded a little funny when you don't have an explanation of them along with these descriptions. I didn't know that the city was in the business of buying and selling, exchanging real estate, et cetera. Maybe that has to do with the Omaha Land Bank, but we citizens don't know much about that. We seldom see anything in the newspaper about it, or any definitions of who else is involved in it. And, you know, I wouldn't mind being in real estate, or I wouldn't mind selling my house, but there's a lot of fees that are involved in that. I wonder if these transactions skirt around those fees? Are we skirting around maybe some people of color that are real estate agents that would like to be a part of these transactions and make a fee? Or help somebody get a property, develop a property? We see, hear no discussions about that. The World Herald doesn't print anything about it. So maybe it should be questioned. If it's done through a corporation that was formed to get around the law, well, that's still fishy. It doesn't, doesn't sound real good and look real good to us citizens that aren't lawyers and aren't students of what you people actually do. But transparency counts a lot, and I'd like to see the city have more transparency on that. Maybe, you know, maybe we could have more cartoons such as the one that was drawn up last week in relation to the resolutions that were passed by both bodies, or pay the reader to have a big article, because the World Herald doesn't.
You're off-topic, sir. Come in.
And, okay. But please, let's have some more transparency, explanations of what these things actually mean. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to testify in any of the consent agenda resolutions? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, 7 to 0. Item 45, a resolution to approve change order number two with TAB construction in the amount of $275,173.25 for additional work on the 78th Street improvements, Pacific to Mercy Road project.
The public hearing on item 45 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero, Festerson Abstains. Item forty-six, an ordinance vacating a portion of the north-south alley south of Vinton Street between Seventeenth and Eighteenth Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item forty-six begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents?
Kyra Peterson, twenty-two oh seven Deer Park Boulevard. I'm also the president of the Deer Park Neighborhood Association. This was kind of brought to our attention kind of late in the game, and I just kind of want to recommend to the council that you kind of reconsider vacating this property and maintaining this as a public city parking lot, as it has been a parking lot for several, several years. It is the only city parking lot in that neighborhood, and to take that away is kind of scary for our neighborhood, because the only other parking lots in that area are privately owned, and they will tow. So this kind of gives the only parking available to our neighborhood besides some limited on-street parking. And if you take away that public parking lot, you start pushing that public parking into our neighborhood. And therefore, I'm the one that hears the complaints from the neighbors about there's no on-street parking. Very limited houses have off-street parking in our neighborhood, and that creates an issue as well. So I'd just like you to reconsider trying to change this from a parking lot. There are other issues. If there's a money issue, maybe consider installing parking meters. I know that Councilman Palermo and I have possibly discussed bringing a BID into this area. Parking would be an issue with that BID. So if we would like to revitalize this area of Omaha, we need to not hinder that area of Omaha and help it move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? The public hearing is closed. Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll just make a couple quick announcements. Maybe you have a couple for next week as well, too, but I just wanted to make sure that we're all clear that this is not, this is not a motion or an action to change the use at this time. It's just really to eliminate kind of the gap between two lots to make it one parcel so that in the future, there may be a possibility that it could be developed, but that development could also address issues such as parking and how it affects the neighborhood at that time. So this is really, it's not changing the use or the purpose at this time. So I'll reserve and may have some more comments for next week.
Thank you, Councilmember Harding. Councilmember Vice President Palermo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I wanted to add as well, with this being a vacate, it has had the attention that's warranted for Vinton Street, obviously historic. Over the last few years, a lot of CDBG money, resources, time, energy from the neighborhood that's been put into this area, because it is so important. Serving on the Public Works Committee, we had this vacate come before us, and that's when it kind of got back to the neighborhood from there. And we had discussion on it, and we usually don't. I know it also was in front of the Planning Board and approved, and myself and planning just today had discussion about this. So we understand how important it is, but today is only vacating this alley that we know, and most of us do know, there is no alley there. It's a paved lot. It's been a paved lot for a long time. And this is more or less cleaning up that area so that if it does go to the neighborhood, it's easier down the road. Or if it goes another route, well, it's still easier down the road. So vacating this, I will be in favor of for that reason, and then as we continue on what we're going to do with this important piece of the neighborhood, we can have that discussion a little bit later. So I would motion to approve.
Public hearing only today.
Okay, well then, for next week.
No further lights. Next item.
Item forty-seven, an ordinance vacating the north-south alley south of Charles Street, east of North Eighteenth Street to the dead end. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on item forty-seven begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item forty-eight, an ordinance levying a special tax and assessment on all lots and pieces of real estate within Street Improvement District number six-eight-eight-zero to cover the cost of constructing and improving South Hundred-and-Sixty-fourth Street from Publoton Avenue to Peterson Drive in Portland Cement Concrete.
Public hearing on item forty-eight begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Item forty-nine, an ordinance to men, special ordinance number one-zero-two-seven-seven, levying a special tax and assessment in district number SWR twenty-nineteen-dash-zero-one to reduce the assessment on the property located at four-seven-four-three South Sixteenth Street in the amount of six-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars forty cents plus accrued interest.
The public hearing on item forty-nine begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item fifty, an ordinance approving an agreement with OPPD and the Hartwood Preserve Master Property Owners Association for streetlights.
Public hearing on item fifty begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Joe Blackspire, one-four-seven-one-zero, West Dodge Road, on behalf of the Hartwood Preserve Project, just here to answer any questions. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
One public hearing can be held for items fifty-one and fifty-two. Ordinances to approve amendments to the land use and transportation elements of the Omaha Master Plan to expand the density corridor designation along the existing corridors of West Center, West Dodge, and West Maple Roads, and to add two-hundred-and-fourth Street corridor. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on items fifty-one and fifty-two begin at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item fifty-three, an ordinance approving a tax increment financing redevelopment agreement with Thirty-eighth and Leavenworth LLC to implement the Thirty-eight-fourteen Leavenworth Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at Thirty-eight-fourteen Leavenworth Street in an amount up to three million, three-hundred thousand dollars.
The public hearing on item fifty-three begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon, Bridget Hadley, City Planning, here to answer questions you may have, and I know Zach Reinhardt is here as well.
Are there any other proponents?
Zach Reinhardt, Burlington Capital, one-zero-zero-four Farnham Street, Suite four-hundred. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents?
Louis Humanaus, thirty-three oh six, Bird Street. I am not really opposed to this. I was looking at the amount of the TIF, which is three hundred, excuse me, three million, over three million dollars. That is a lot of money for development, and I think that people in residence aren't asking for a lot. They're not asking for a lot of money for redevelopment. Want to make one point that today, at the Nebraska Legislature, there was an idea of passing micro-TIFT, or micro-TIF. So I'm, I'm interested in that. Maybe Bridget Hadley has an opinion on that, and I'll talk to her sometime. Thank you.
Are there any other opponents?
Larry Store, five-oh-one-five Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, six-eight-one-three-two. I'm opposed to this, as I'm opposed to most large apartment mixed-use development things with tax increment financing. I don't know that citizens understand that all that well, but it appears that some people get a break on, on the property taxes and the development costs. The people that live in the area, particularly that want to stay in the area the rest of their lives, end up paying the price of it through higher property taxes of their own property due to the development that you're approving. And I'm not real sure, but as I drive around Omaha and the outskirts of Omaha, I just don't see where you're going to attract enough people to fill all these apartments that you've been granting this to. And my other question on it that I, the reason I oppose is oftentimes it appears to me, because we don't explain these things, that the land-in question was being raised or developed or torn down or whatever, long before it ever came to a vote before the council. It seems that way at, at the old hotel lounge on the corner of Seventy-second and Center. It seemed that way down on Saddle Creek. It seems that way over here. I tend to remember a building being there. Well, did somebody walk away from these buildings? And you tore them down free of charge? Or somebody that wants the building tore them down free of charge? Like the old hotel and bar lounge? There were people parking city equipment trucks and tree removal trucks, various things on those properties, but I never heard that somebody folded and moved out of town and dumped it on the city. How did that property get sold, and how did other people get to use it? Thank you.
Are there any other opponents? The public hearing is closed. Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll just state for the record that, yes, it is three-point-three million dollars of TIF, but it's also over twenty-eight million dollars of investment. It's less than twelve percent, TIF is less than twelve percent of the project cost. This is very much in line with how TIF should be utilized. It's going to be a great addition to the area. It's near UNMC and Midtown, and I applaud the developers for their investment in the community.
Thank you, and I would just add that it was a prior owner who tore down the structure on the premises. Matt and Clark.
Item fifty-four, an ordinance to accept the bid of waste management in a total amount of thirty-thousand-six-hundred-and-forty-five dollars to provide rubbish container services to the four eighteen-hole golf courses and to the four nine-hole golf courses.
Public hearing on item fifty-four begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item fifty-five, an ordinance to ratify an investment manager agreement with Scout Investments, Inc., to provide services as an investment manager to invest and reinvest city assets as determined by the finance director.
Public hearing on item fifty-five begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Item fifty-six, an ordinance to amend Omaha Municipal Code, Chapter thirteen, Article four, entitled Fair Housing, to add provisions prohibiting housing discrimination on the basis of sexual orientation and gender identity.
The public hearing on item fifty-six begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Oh, thank you.
Proponent.
Dr. Thompson, Director of Human Rights and Relations Department. Welcome.
Franklin Thompson, eighteen-nineteen Farnham Street, Human Rights and Relations. Eight years ago, I stood a hundred-and-eighty-degree opposite to where I stand today. Although I was never a blatant enemy against LGBT community rights, I was also not a proponent of their rights. Today, I am both a friend and an ally, and I stand in full support of amending the current city ordinance that only covers employment protections. My eight-year journey of growth is multifaceted and much too involved to describe in this particular setting. In fact, it's the stuff that you write novels of. I won't get into that, but I am open to sitting down and having lunch with anyone who wishes to discuss that journey, especially if you agree to pay for the lunch. Today, my support is based on two basic principles. Number one, LGBT citizens are people just like me and you. They hurt, they cry, they fear, and they bleed, just like me and you. Housing, employment, safety needs, and putting food on one's table should never be items negotiated by religion, politics, or partisan, partisan posturing. I have made my eighty-degree turn, and I'm not going back. This particular upgrade to the ordinance will give my department, Omaha Human Rights and Relations Department, the ultimate tool it needs to properly investigate egregious acts conducted against a person's right to live comfortably and safely in a place that they want to call home. Now, up until now, the federal guidelines that my department lives by or governs itself by does not actually allow us to have that as a category, but still, we have taken some cases, and over the last eight years, we have investigated twelve such cases and could have had six more had the people decided to follow through. They just gave us a call, but then decided to give up on it. This particular change will actually give us a specific right to do what we need to do, and I would like to say that my staff is, they're crackerjacks. They know what they're doing. In summary, I would like to leave this council with the famous words of two of my mentors, one being Mahatma Gandhi, and his words were, "Be the change you wish for." And the other is my grandma, Justine McQueen, and her words were, "The best way to undo a bad decision is to make a new decision." My name is Franklin Thompson. I'm a proud conservative, and I support agenda number fifty-six, and I'll be available if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents?
Larry Store, five-oh-one-five Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, six-eight-one-three-two. Once again, I'm opposing. I have some questions, because there's no explanation here, but isn't there a federal law about fair housing? Then why do we need one? And also, what do you mean by fair housing? And you don't explain housing, whether it's prohibiting discrimination in public housing, meaning city Omaha property, or in all housing. I don't like the idea that you might be telling me I can't sell my house to whoever I please, short of them being a criminal. If that's what's behind this, then I think all citizens ought to say absolutely no. Time to stop this stuff. There are already laws that prohibit discrimination, and last week, you guys passed resolutions to try and undo the ban on affirmative action, which didn't work out so good, I guess, for the people over all these years. But the idea behind that was non-discrimination. Well, since the nineteen-seventies, has human nature improved the situation on discrimination? Apparently not. But how many leaders are guilty of that? But we citizens get blamed for it. And here I have a resolution in front of me that says, "You're a hater, and you can't sell your house." If anybody wants to complain that you might be discriminating on the basis of how many alphabets to the letter, letters in the alphabet, who knows what they're going to come up with next? Unconstitutional. Thank you.
Are there any other opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Non-action items, items fifty-seven through seventy-nine, do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and/or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on agenda for consideration.
Second, roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Meeting is adjourned at three-oh-four.[1771.58]